So the meeting is now in progress. Welcome, everybody. The meeting of the Oakham Town Council on Wednesday the 14th of September 2016. Item one, we've got quite a bit to get through, so we'll... And I appreciate that they're not working. Well, I've got two pock down there, so I apologize for that. So apologies, receive apologies. So we've got apologies from Luke Todd, Vince Howard of the Jewish Luke... Joyce Luke, this is a ten at one time. Proposal for Vince, Tracy, seconded by Sally Anne. All those in favour? Next unanimous. Proposer for Joyce, Stan, seconded by Jasmine. All those in favour? Unanimous. Okay. Decorations of interest. Members are asked to declare required any disposable or cumulative interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Any other interests can you make sure that you sign the book? Has anybody got any interests? Sally Anne?
Um, Tenney is, um...
Do 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 do. Well, it's a competition.
Yeah, I'm a representative of the Oakham Town Partnership supposedly.
Yeah.
So I best not vote on that.
Okay. Uh, item ten. Over.
Ten nine. Tenney, Tenney something.
Yeah, we're currently interested in ten because I'm one of the judges. So we've got ten, right? Ten's that one. So will you be abstaining?
Yes.
So that's both an item ten, Sally Anne and Stan. Um, and obviously we know that in the book later on. Uh, minutes, to confirm the minutes of the meeting on Wednesday, the 10th of August 2016. Um, this also includes the confidential papers associated with it, which was the exempt items. So anybody got any comments or observations about table? Uh, Ian?
Yes, um, I don't accept these as a true and accurate record of events that happened. You would speak these minutes as if we'd had a perfectly smooth meeting. Um, also, I have made numerous requests to the office to see the minute which quite clearly disappeared from the information of town councillors only and the acting clerk and the council and the assistant clerk of the council. So until I've seen that minute, I can't accept any of these minutes. And obviously, if the basis that it doesn't show that the council followed correct procedure when I was excluded from the meeting which took part in the office. It doesn't say that the meeting was adjourned. It doesn't say it was recently been. And since I've put in a complaint about that, the assistant clerk wrote and said it's held within the confidential minute. Well, you can't min it.
Okay, now I get how you're saying you can't support. You don't accept any of that.
No, they're not. They're not an accurate record of what happened on that evening.
Uh, anybody else want any comments or observations? Otherwise, I'll be looking for somebody to propose these minutes. Proposed by Michael Hayley, seconded by Stan Stubbs. All those in favour? Uh, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And you're against abstaining? And can you be on that minute even if you're against or not?
You can do it.
On this case, yes.
I'm with it.
Okay, thank you. So one abstainer. So against, councillor Brooks was against.
No, he abstained.
It was one, two, three, four, five. Everyone else was in agreement. And councillor Brooks was against. That's because any eight of them are two, three, four, five, six, seven, four, one against. The two, three, four, five. Um, minutes or signos? Yep. Yeah.
I know, it's got a bit hot in that shower. This will be a usual.
There he is. Um. So on the agenda, on the minutes, item two is for information only to receive the reported actions taken at the last meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah?
Um. Item one, item one nine one sixteen, councillor Michael Hayley. The act is regulation. On behalf of the council, I'd like to, on the 25th of August, say as follows. A right to confirm your decision to resign as a councillor of the town council was received by the town councillor after meeting held on the 10th of August 2016 with much regret. The formal notice declared a casualty notice in the public. I am sure the large majority of the town council will wish you to address on their behalf their sincere appreciation and gratitude for the long and distinguished service brought to the town council and the Oakham community area, which you have given. Councillor, I don't know, council chairman has commented your example as how local councils should be in this role of serving the town council. An appropriate commendation is being reported within the council in the 10th of August meeting. I hope the town will be able to keep some of our future contact with you. In the meantime, all that remains for me to do is on the town council alone and the council staff, is to wish you good health and much confidence for the future. That's the end of it.
Okay, thank you. That's noted, thank you very much. Anything else on there?
No.
Right, anyone else?
Yeah, can I just make a comment? And so that's the first time that that's actually happened here at this council. When even a mayor resigned from this council, it was a case of members said, well, we don't say anything. And I think that's a great improvement and I hope that it continues.
Okay, well, that great improvement is thanks to Malcolm Flon.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next item is, um, item two, one, uh, the town staff, they have an advice about the council decision. Two, one, one, the CCTV agreement, the letter has been sent. Uh, and then the remittance of the 62,000, which is item two, one, four.
Yep.
Um, I have, um, written a letter to two objectives of Dr Ben McAdams asking them to step out what, um, what is wanted. I read it very, very rapidly through the channel.
Okay.
Uh, I have risen to the point of this acting cap, blah, 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 blah. During the meeting of the Oakham Town Council held on the 10th of August 2016, council has received an updated report on the matter. Town councillor Michael Hayley's wife and son have been endeavoured to establish the specific purpose and applicable limitations to a sum of money of 62,000, which will be paid into the town council's bank from the county council earlier this year. This, I can, was part of a formally bound people agreement to build section quality payment in respect to the proposed, the open, that's a very... The problem is that at present, town council has not yet received sufficiently clear and consistent directions upon what this grant can be used for and what conditions need to be provided. Mr Philaton's director of development and control has provided some guidance, but we do not know if the draft supplementary agreement has yet been completed. And here's what is this content relative to the grant already received by town council. This situation will allow the minister's town council to issue consideration options upon the most appropriate use of this fund grant. And therefore writing to press town governments and town agencies in order the town council can begin to plan alternative schemes. Um, that letter was sent on the 25th of August. And I would have to say that I have not let have a little while.
Okay, thank you. That's a proposal position. A proposal position, that's the update on where we are on actions which are... So Peter?
I know this is information only, but I do feel strongly that this needs to be brought to an end. And I think we need to tell the county council it's affecting our decisions on other matters. I mean, it's a chunk of our future budget and we're just in limbo. And, you know, they can't expect us to make decisions on various other issues which are costing considerable sums of money.
Yeah, totally agree. Thank you, Peter. And that's a fact, this might have been a test. We're going to start off track, but let's be deliberately informed. Having a discussion with the clerk, the scene during the meeting, because we've made aware that they have to reply back. We're now going to put forward suggestions on where the money is going to spend and if they disagree, then they should challenge it. So that way they're able to just move forward. Martin?
Can I just respond to that? There is a legal document which I've provided to council, which is a deed, and it's signed by Rutland County Council and Hortsley. And it very clearly says what the money is to be spent on. And it is just to bring the people or for the benefit of bringing the people from open north west into Oakham and Uppingham. We can't just spend it on anything.
No, well, not saying that we're spending on anything. So that's one of the...
No, I'm just saying that's, there is a purpose set down. And I understand what you're saying, that the Oakham mess and Rutland County Council haven't directed us properly to that document. And I understand we need confirmation. It's there, it's in the public domain because somebody did a free information request, so...
Okay, well, we have, we are doing this in reverse, but go on, Michael. This is the last thing we're going to talk about. We're going to be...
That we have the document which came to council, which came before me. What we are waiting for is confirmation that the assignment who created that person refers to has been signed. It has been signed, but it has no basis.
Yeah.
That, that is what we're waiting for, just for that.
Fine, well, let's move forward. So, um, members' reports, it's received, members' reports. Any other members got reports?
Got a couple.
Oh, you did.
I'm hoping to do, uh, item two.
Oh, sorry.
The letter I've been...
Yeah.
I'll recall that if you're lucky.
Yeah, brilliant, okay. Thank you. Uh, yeah, members' reports, um, for many members. Uh, I'll just wait briefly, because I think you've been in session at this point.
No, I'm only reporting.
We're covered on part one. But just make you aware, I don't, I don't normally report on events where I don't open an envelope or whatever else I do now as the mayor, because you probably read the paper. Um, but just make you aware that I did attend the East Midland in Bloom awards event today at Mansfield, which was quite interesting. I was invited by, um, uh, the Oakham Bloom people. Um, Oakham was awarded silver gilt. Uppingham won gold in best in their category, which was on the radio. And also, Uppingham achieved some other significant awards as well, which will come out later on. So, uh, so congratulations to Oakham Bloom and congratulations to Uppingham Bloom, who have done absolutely fantastic. Um, and also, I want you to be aware that on Monday evening, Rutland County Council accepted myself as the representative from the town council onto the conduct committee. That will be in standing until 2019. Um, no other members report, so we'll move through that and go to... Right, I support.
Right, um, a detail I want, yeah, um, the main, the main phone there, what was rang off?
Yeah.
Um, the organisers were back to me and said that they'd like to talk to do again next year. I said, what, maybe, maybe not? And they said, no, this is all...
All right. All right, that is good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Should they write in?
Yeah, if you've been acknowledging, if you've already acknowledged, if you've acknowledged that, saying thank you for that news now, and can they please submit another application or another request? Because it's not, we won't take it as read, but it's just because of income this year, it doesn't open doors for next year. And somebody else might book the slots. Martin, you going to say something?
Yes, sorry, I know it's not real information, but there is a cheque in the office. Could that not be written? Because I worry when things like that are left behind. Because they, they did it on a trust thing that they, that they, they paid. And because they cancelled, they said, don't give that back. But I think it should go back with the letter. But Alison won't know about it.
Malcolm make a note and look it through.
I was with all camps, yeah. Um, led on the meeting at half, and let me take notes of questions.
Yes.
Whatever that is.
Okay.
So then make a payment for that.
Yeah, Alison won't know about it. And it's in a file somewhere, but I don't think it should be held by the council.
Right, okay. No, fine, I'll just, yeah. I have to report that, um, following numerous complaints from eight councillors and from our assistant draft house and also from myself, a full and detailed form of complaint alleging further breaches of the code of conduct by not in past weeks submitted to the RCC marketing office. It involved the date of our first of September 2016, which can add more. In a normal court of events, um, uh, Martin will be given full opportunity to contact the office to the marketing office. And I will liaise with the eight councillors concerned to ensure that they're checking their catch-up case, the value investigation. And if I need further information on items, I will confirm it as part of the task. But I, I just mentioned that report forward.
All functions activated. Thank you. It's noted by everybody. Um. That's just a, come on, I'm giving you a recap, but when you do your minutes over the next square, I'll do my part for two.
Oh, hang on. Yes, all right. That's simple.
Uh, right, so the clerk, we've covered it up, thank you. Death penalty by the public, no public presence at the moment. Item seven there, a bit of colour in the background. Is the, right, the working group, which is that document there, the one with the colour boxes on it. The town council at the last meeting opted to go to this working group approach to the council. So working groups, I'm blanking, but I know if we're going to have a... So seven, working groups and steering group strategy assurance, which, um, it's to do with the neighbourhood plan steering group, which is that longer printed out where they're up to. I don't think it's in, I think it's just the council's notice, is that one? Um, unless anybody's got the observations or comments from Martin?
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with what's on there. I'm, they almost seem to be working about with, like, contacting the public and letting them know what's going on. But I am concerned that for many, many months, we're not getting the same reports as efficient and as Michael does on this from any of the other working groups in the council. And some of those are quite important, like the finance and the cemetery working group. So I just wondered why we're not getting the reports.
Okay, well, I can answer that now, but, um, I'll note it and we will, we'll chase it up. I'm sure that October will be a whole new month. But what's that report from other groups?
All other working groups, we haven't, we haven't had any for a long time.
Same level of reports from other working groups. So that would be the finance, cemetery, promotion publicity working, the, um, HLF one, which I believe I haven't done anything yet, so we're not going to look at that. I've been in long. Okay, right, eight, eight is the critical one. Sorry, right, last, last month, councillor, working group approach. Um, in August, we adopted this working group strategy approach. Uh, this document is purely to highlight who is on those groups at the moment. You'll notice, for instance, on the last pink one, the HLF bid, there's only one person, which is myself. I'm expected to conclude that in October, November, if I related. Any changes? I'd say no. So we're going to go from the top. Um, so the finance working group currently consists of the clerk, and it can also be the assistant clerk and Michael Hayley, potentially another two. Anybody else enjoying it? Martin, you're some turner.
Uh, can I just make a comment about one of the descriptions in here and an observation? Because I should keep quiet, because obviously I'm still banned from working groups. Because there's been no dates when I can go on. And working groups, as far as I've looked up, can't make decisions, i.e. spending money, delegated powers. Um, so I am a bit concerned that the working groups are being given a budget. Are we going to get some assurance that they are going to bring reports to the council detailing how they want to spend their budgets so that it can actually be... So then that makes it, I know you don't like the word, but lawful. Um, and I was wondering if the events and publicity, because their expenditure varies, perhaps shouldn't have been a working group and should have actually, because it goes on forever. They made a committee so that they could have a budget and make their own delegated decisions within a remit such as advertising, rents and promotion.
The, um, the publicity working group have always had a budget which has been agreed by council before they can spend it. And they can't spend it without getting it put on a works order through the assistant clerk. So within our financial regulations, there are controls in place where a working group produces a budget based on, let's say, events. They presented the council, the council really liked it. The money is ring fenced throughout the year when they can spend it. The assistant clerk raises the appropriate works order and she pays invoices. So this is how we've been doing it for a number of years and it does work. But I know your comments, yes, we will make sure that all working groups, um, only spend what they've been agreed by council. Peter?
Yes, just coming back to the agenda. I'm happy to put the note forward to the first one.
Finance?
Finance, yes. But just an observation, I think we're a bit thin on the finance side.
On finance? Yeah.
Well, overall.
Oh, yes, we are, only nine, uh, eight, ten, ten councillors. Um, yeah, so unfortunately, because Martin can't attend any of these groups before being for the, for the keeper, yeah, makes it Martin. So Peter's expressed an interest in the finance. Uh, could probably have a deal with the one, anybody else interested? Has there? Finance, yeah. That would be, yeah. It, it does, I mean, I'm not putting myself forward, because normally they tend to meet during the day, because I'm sort of like yourself, Tracy, we tend to be tied up away from our homes for most of the week. Uh, right, okay, so that'd be handy. So at the moment, I'll take as, um, Peter's proposed himself, we'll take his proposal. Jasmine proposed herself, so I'm looking for a second for Peter, Sally Anne. And I'll take a second for Jasmine, which is Tracy. So all those in favour of Peter? You can vote for him. Martin, are you voting on this?
I would like to abstain from any of the...
So there's seven, voting for, and one abstention.
So you don't need to ask.
Okay, thank you. And then, so Jasmine, we've got, so that was proposed by Jasmine, seconded by Tracy, I think, for several, isn't it? All those in favour? So that's seven in favour and one abstention. Does that make any sense? Peter goes seven. Three, two. Seven. Um, the next one, the other red one, it's now the policies and procedures working group at the moment. It does consist of three plus the clerk. That's, it says Malcolm, or it could be, once again, it could be Alison if Malcolm's not about. Um, it's got Michael Hayley, Stan Sturt and Peter Ives. Does it need any more? I thought there potentially another two, but does it need more people on the policies and procedures working group? I'm open to any comments. No? No? So shall we lead the policy? If, if these don't change, we don't have to vote on them, because they're already established and we'll just move through it. So, so policies and procedures will stay as is. We don't need to vote on it because it's already established working group. Um, events and publicity, any changes at the moment? It's got Alison would be the clerk, who would normally, if she's invited, go along to meetings to helpfully guide them. Vince is normally the leader at the moment. He's got Tracy, Sally Anne and Jasmine specifically. Um, this took off skill set towards the Facebook, Twitter and web. Do we need any more on the promotional public working group?
No. Obviously, what we would like, sorry, is, um, volunteers for the...
Yes, right, okay. And that's what we need to do when it comes to events, volunteers, because it's been before lost over. In essence, no change to the, so no change to, to the events and publicity. The thing is, we, this at the moment, I mean, that group there, you're looking, hopefully you're looking at your budget, it's put forward to seventeen. I know Vince is, doesn't work and he does a really good job. Um, he needs to communicate it better sometimes if you're not aware.
We are, we, we are, we have a meeting on Friday. However, we want it in terms of, our terms of reference so that we can clearly document it and then...
They weren't provided in a, in a folder, so the thing is, you can always, um...
Because that's what we discussed, wasn't it? Until we've got the terms of reference.
They might just make it a folder here, so if they were having a word with Alison, if not, you can say, look, these are our terms of reference that we've now adopted and just tell us.
All right.
Okay? It's, it is pretty open book, really. And that's right, I mean, last year, you guys did, I think you did a great job this season. And you took over from, um, the, the, the other crew, which included myself and Joyce who's on it and I think Rebecca Herbert and Jasmine would back home. And we sort of set the projects for this year and the ideas rolling, but you guys picked up and rounded it and did it even better. So this year, two seventeen, when it comes in, opportunity to really knock stuff up.
We've, we've got lists, so we've got a plan, we've got a plan, we've got a formulator.
Um, right, moving on to the cemetery, which is currently meant to be, ideally, any changes. Um, it could consist of Malcolm, if he's available, or Alison, Peter, I, Stan and Joyce. Stan is interested.
What do you have, I mean, you agreed to come on there?
Well, it was, I was asked if I would and I said I would consider it if I was needed. Um, I did believe, I thought Michael was interested as well. Michael Hayley, he's still interested.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, yes, we think, oh, it's, sorry, I did. I have always, I haven't mentioned it to, to Michael.
Are you, Joyce presumably, I don't know if you spoke to her, but she doesn't want to come off if she... Uh, presumably you don't want to come off. Peter, you having to stay on it, or if you want, yeah? I know that you wanted to step down as leader if you're trying to...
For personal reasons.
Yes, absolutely. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to bolster that, that group and try and get it. I think there's been some good work, because there's lots of sound groundwork going on by itself, the group, specifically Michael Elliott, I think, who's been on with me, driving certain decisions to get things done. So it's only a case of filling slots to make sure that we, we need, one, we drive this through, we get a conclusion that answers by, I'd say, ideally October's meeting. That's what I'm looking for, a decision back to RCC, because it has dragged on for far too long. So proposal...
Can I, can I just, yeah, come in there? Because it's, it's dragged on, we've been waiting for...
Yeah, I'll use the wrong term on the question, but...
Um, we're waiting for the report.
So it appears to have dragged on, but we've been waiting on others.
Yes.
Um, so Stan has proposed Adam Low and Stan has also proposed Michael Hayley. Who would care to settle on Low, Adam Low? Tracy? And who will second? Really? Sure? See what I got?
Well, I don't, I don't need these points.
Right, okay. Well, I'm still, if I'm not bad, you can step in, we meet during the day. Yeah, can we get on something?
Because we're just a fish, you know, we're mayor, I'm pretty, you know.
Love it. That's why you're here, because you come up with good ideas. Right, Michael Hayley's still there, because if I can't hate it, then you can go instead. So that's why I promote, promote by Stan, seconded by, um, uh, someone, by Adam. Right, let's vote on Adam Low. Voting on Adam and Michael to go on to the cemetery working group. So first of all, we're going to vote on Adam Low. We'll vote in favour of Adam. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and one abstention. And all those to vote on Michael Hayley. You can vote for yourself, one.
Sorry.
Seven, one abstention. Sounds familiar, isn't it? Okay, the neighbourhood plan steering group, I don't think we need to make any changes, do we? Come back changes, that's, so neighbourhood plan steering group, no changes. Thank you. That must be the constitution. Uh, Oakham Community Centre, this is nearly completion, I don't see the point in adding extra people up there. Anyway, you happy there, Michael? So, members got any comments on it? Oakham Community Centre group, no changes? No. Uh, HLF bid, um, there's definitely not going to be changes because there's nothing to do. Just carry on. And the committee is, do we need to have anybody else on the staff? Is anybody else interested in going on to the staffy committee at all? No? No, it's not, no, that's fine. So staffy committee, no changes. And the planning committee, planning committee, if you like, which consists of Alison, Vince, Jasmine, Stan and Peter. Is anybody else want to be on to that? Do we need any changes?
Honestly, I think that's enough.
Yeah, yeah, I would get to that as well. Uh, okay, so no changes on that. Okay. That would ease it a lot.
Hmm.
So, what's next? Oh, yes. Item nine is cuts and clogs outside tat. This is where the, I think it's all self-explanatory, lady wrote in, said it would be lovely cut of water in the park. Item nine is cuts and floats outside tap, this is where the, I think it's all self-explanatory, lady wrote in, said it would be lovely, cut water in the park. We have water in the shelter, it's a sensible idea, any comments or observations? We're gonna have to tell them, say it.
Is it gonna be a standard, or is it one gonna be that?
It's, yeah, it's, it's called a non-concussive big tap, what you do is you strike the top and it pours for about ten seconds, and then it cuts itself off.
Right, that's fine, I'm just worried about water being wasted, don't you?
No, and if, 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 we'll keep an eye on it, if it starts being abused or somebody snaps it off, really mind that, we'll keep an eye on it, in which case it becomes, you know, the, the, the decision then, so, Martin?
I'm not actually sure it's what the lady wants, because I read on Facebook her post when she said she emailed the council, she actually wants one of the old fashioned type with a dog bowl at the bottom, which most councils stop using for health reasons. Um, there is a tap in the churchyard which we manage, so I think if she was directed to there, because I think the tap outside the shelter is likely to be vandalised. This evening I picked up white side of things and people urinated into shelter. It's not, it's not ideal to have these things in a place, I think, like that, where it could be vandalised, and it's on a water meter as well, so it's gonna.
Um, so there's a tap at the church?
Yes, there is a tap at the church.
Probably on the church.
But they're not water metered and we manage the churchyard.
Okay, all right, does it mean that, has one of the church been vandalised, do you know?
Not that I'm aware of, I don't know, I didn't master the church, but, um, but it's hidden between
Okay.
buttresses, you know, some people know it's there.
Um, we discussed this, we also said that the lady did originally suggest that it, you, you get a lot of dog walkers in the park and it would be good. You also get a lot of children in the park, so you get a hot day, a nice day, parents behind them, fellow children, kids, that goes up.
Yeah.
Um, but.
It's one of the reasons why it's for Alice to check to see if the water was fit for human consumption, and it is.
Also, Alison hasn't done it, but I, when she was doing New York Council on this, I asked her to look into.
Water damage?
No, it's one fact, so, so Oakham Town Council has provided this water tap, please respect it, blah, 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 but there's no point on that.
We could, we could probably arrange that. Yeah, we, I think, I think we probably would hope of that, as Plaque's put it, saying that the water is fit for, uh, human consumption as well, yeah, so that could be done. I mean, that would be probably another hundred pounds as well within delegate project of the Assistant Clerk, or the Clarks, so. Any other comments or observations on this? Uh, anybody want to propose, Michael, want to propose, that we?
I was only going to be going with the second proposal, that's expensive.
With a plaque, so, yeah, so proposed by Michael Hayley, seconded by Sam Sturts, all those in favour? Seven for, Martin against, Martin against. The, uh, Oakham Photographic Competition. It's pretty self-explanatory, um. Anybody got any comments or observations on this? We can, under the general power of confidence, competence, um, award a modest prize, so we're not going to do that legislation. Uh, Martin?
Um, I, I would dispute that, because we, we had a situation with, um, Catlin's College where people used to loophole an award in two people, because the local government act says you cannot reward an individual or an individual solely benefit from the precinct. The Empowerment Act doesn't allow you to override, um, what's there in the local government act. If it didn't say anything, then the Empowerment Act allows us to do it. But there is clear limited evidence that this council acknowledges that you cannot reward an individual. And when we went to Catlin's College, not last year, but the year before, the prize was given to two children because of that local government act of nineteen seventy-two, which really states what I said, I won't repeat myself. And also, the town partnership has lots of money, and I don't believe we should be supporting this.
Okay.
I'm not against the competition, but I think they should go out and get sponsorship from business, so, thank you.
Any other comments or observations? Uh, Tracy?
I disagree, I think we should be supporting this, I think it shows collaboration and partnership working. I think, um, it's about, um, the bigger picture, so, um, we want to, to promote something and do something, then we already started to establish a working relationship.
Okay. Uh, any other comments? We've got some back to my one, all right, okay. No, you're not, no, Martin, any other comments?
I think missing the point is that if it was like we were giving a prize to a school, then we can do it. But we cannot give the prize, as it's put here, to one person. And that's, 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 that's the law, that's not me making it up, it's, it quite clearly says the, the. Now, one of the problems we had as a council, which could solve it, if you could say to me that the money was coming out of the income from the rent for this, then we can do it. But because we don't define our income, everything gets counted as the precinct.
Okay.
Can we not, can we not involve this, this as a contribution to the competition? To, uh, to, to, to the competition generally?
Yeah, we.
A contribution to an individual.
Right, yes, and I was just gonna say that, what we can do, we can actually say that we cannot contribute to an individual, however, the Town Council will contribute fifty pounds towards a competition which is promoting the town, which is within our jurisdiction. So, uh, by the way, appropriately, and thank you for highlighting that, Martin, how can we do? Um, we can, we can award fifty pounds to Oakham Town Partnership as in a fair group competition to promote the town. So how they choose to use that money, of course, we're not asking them to report back this fifty pounds as, like, even that money, so. Uh, decisions are, Oakham Town Council supports this donation or does not, so first of all, does anybody want to propose Oakham Town Council supports these donations? Proposed by Tracy that we support it, seconded by Michael Hayley. All those in favour?
We'd have that.
With the caveat that it is to support the, uh, competition, not specifically bringing it up. One, two, three, four, five, four, against, one, abstentions, two, and that's with your vote on the.
Yeah.
Anybody?
Honestly.
And the donation amount is fifty, it's the question, oh, right, we'll give you a big one. And the second part of this is that the main, the donation amount is fifty pounds, should it be fifty pounds or should it be another amount?
Fifty pounds?
It has to be fifty pounds.
Yeah, it does.
So I propose that it's fifty pounds by Tracy, seconded by, um, Peter Ives. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five.
Okay.
Against by, and two abstentions at the same time. I get the photograph something there, I'm trying to get it. Uh, Oakham Town like that, that's real, aren't they? Castle benches, right, um, a fact of fact, it has been highlighted, Martin, that the Town Council had some time ago already agreed, because they had a process about having benches, when we first of all went into this partnership or conversation with them about letting them, not letting them, but supporting them as a partner in the work that's been done on the castle restoration. Um, and we'd already agreed or approved to pay for three benches. Rutland County Council already gave three benches and put them in, um, or the water supply for three benches, and it was when Robert Clayton sort of said, ooh, would the Town Council pay for two of the particular benches like the one that's in there? So as to concern, basically, that's what we decided on, so we'd already agreed eighteen seventy-one previously. Now what we're asking for is that, a fact of fact, we just would like the Town Council to pay for two of these, which are
Nine.
Five hundred and nine pounds each plus the eighty. Now, any comments or observations? Otherwise, I would propose from the chair that we agree to contribute to purchasing the benches, for two of them at the cost um, of five hundred and nine each plus the eighty. That's the proposal, seconded by Martin. All those in favour? It's unanimous, so on that, then we just agree to that.
I know you said they've sent in a picture, could we not, could we not, uh, ask, or could you not ask if they could actually get a better one? Do you know, because the prices obviously could be similar, and I think putting people on the end of a bench in a wheelchair doesn't include them on my wheelchair, so.
I, I, I'll, you'll email the end to me, I'll forward it on to Robert Clayton, that's him, and in the meantime, I'm telling the council, well, actually Malcolm's job is responsibility, not job, Malcolm's responsibility is to pass on that we accept it. And also, we're sending a separate amount to Robert Clayton as well. So there's a, maybe we agree to provide two benches, and it actually says on there, I think, to turn off ground, because I was conscious of the fact of what we've previously said. Uh, but that's fine, that's, that's a good thing. Um, I think the council's looking good, I think they're doing well. Thank you, thank you, that, that was rough.
I think they just grew the image.
Right, item twelve is the amendment to the the way that Michael wanted to do that, because he's part of the beat on this team, but, excuse me, um, item twelve is the amendments to the council standing orders, which is appendix G. Uh, we will go through each one in turn, possibly, I think.